Welcome, everyone, to the hearings of the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeal. I'm Jim Hilliard, and tonight I'm going to be the acting chair. To my left is Kathleen Muller. To my right is Jamie Armstrong. And to his right is Michael Capoli. I first have to tell all of you who are here for a hearing that ordinarily we have a five-member board. And those of you who don't know, in order to get either a special permit or a variance, it requires four out of five votes in the positive. When you have a four-member board, you have the option of not going forward. You have the option of telling the chair that you would prefer waiting until the next round when there is a five-member board. I apologize for that. We always do a head count prior to coming here, and there was whatever reason, one of the members who was supposed to be here is not here. So while you're out there, you can think about whether you want to proceed. We'll give you the option when we call your case as well. The hearing will be videotaped, and it'll be on, I believe, Channel 18 at some point this week. And that being the case, I would invite the -- Ms. Muller, if you would read the first case, please.
Yes. This case is continued from last month, case 2019-04. Thomas and Ann Chipman have applied for a special permit to build in addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, paragraph 325, section 325, table 2, area regulations as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 20 Bayberry Road, MAP 24, parcel K15, in the RH zoning district. And we do have a letter from the Health Department, written by Katie Tenoglia, Senior Health Agent. She indicates that she has reviewed the application, that the septic system was installed in 2018 and was designed to accommodate three bedrooms, so it still meets the requirements of the proposed work, and the Health Department has no issues with the proposed work.
And for the record, this case was continued from March 27th, I believe?
Yes.
There was an issue with the advertising. Probably not a major issue, but you've made the right choice to re-advertise and come back. Gentlemen, would you please give us your names before we start?
I'm Thomas Chipman, and I live in Hollis, Massachusetts.
And you, sir?
Dan Croto, from Moran Engineering. I'm here supporting Tom and Ann. Ann, his wife, is also in the audience for questions.
You may proceed.
Let's see. Tom and Ann bought this house last year, and they're renovating a pretty rundown property. As was stated, the septic has already been improved. Tom could go more into it, but the idea is anything that's now non-conforming due to the age of the subdivision in the house, sticking within that footprint. But as he's thought about the project more and more, he doesn't want to bring it right down to the floor and rebuild with two-by-six and full insulation to meet the code. But anything within the non-conforming setbacks is not changed footprint-wise. The roof will change, and the front will be dormered in a second story. The west side, the roofline gets changed slightly. Another important part of this project is it allows the owners to make the house flood compliant, and that they can bring the basement, remove the basement, bring the under-floor space of the house up to grade on one of the sides and put in flood vents and reduce any issue of safety due to the 100-year flood for his family and debris upon neighbors' The footprint change is towards the back. That's all conforming, 27'9" on one side, 27'8" feet on the other side. And with that, I'll see if Tom wants to add anything.
Yeah, so we purchased this house a year ago, and, you know, I'm not looking to rent it. I've got five kids, and we're looking to find us a little place to have a little second home and love the spot. So it's pretty rundown. When we bought the house, it was under the condition that it was a homeowner's, a handyman's special. So what happened was, I was going to leave the front wall and the sidewall, and once I saw it, I got a permit to do the demo inside to take the sheet rock down, and I noticed that the front wall behind the two-by-sixes has homosode. To take off the siding and put that on, I've gone that far now. If I go to take that sheathing all off, really, I'd better off putting the wall back up with two-by-six walls to meet today's energy codes. So that's what I'm looking to actually take the roof off. That's what we were originally looking at, was take the roof off, go up, take two bedrooms upstairs. It used to have two bedrooms down below. We want to put the two bedrooms upstairs and a full bath. And in the back, we'll have the kitchen on it. So the footprint downstairs is pretty much staying the same way. So it's more or less, we're going to put the bedrooms upstairs, make the kitchen a little bigger in the back, and make the house meet the energy code.
Anything further?
Nope. We'll ask for your comments.
Okay. Questions, Ms. Muller?
Yes, I do have a question. The work you just described, Mr. Chipman, I don't think is totally described here. Is this, are you replacing more than 50% of the current house?
We are, yeah.
Is this a raise and rebuild situation?
No, no, I'm not cheering it totally down, no. I'm leaving the deck in there and the foundations, all that staying there. I was just going to take the, originally, we were going to take the back walls off and then push the whole house out and go up and make the roof taller and put that, bedrooms upstairs. But I'm requesting right now, if I can, is to go down to the deck.
Okay. And I noticed there was discrepancy between the setback chart dated February 19th and the one dated March 27th. The one dated February 19th said that the building coverage was identical to the site coverage, and then the March one was somewhat different.
That actually was an error.
Ma'am, could you identify yourself first, please?
Oh, sure. I'm Ann Chipman. That was an error. I filled out the paperwork, but they're very nice. And when I did that correction...
Yeah, ma'am. Could you get on the mic, please? Thank you.
So that was an error. I filled that paperwork out, and then when we had spoken further with Moran Engineering, he gave me the right figures. So when we were continued to this date, I had, that's why you actually received that second sheet, is when it was continued, I corrected my error and submitted it for the board's consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the building coverage will really, for the proposed plans, will be 880 square feet and 11.3% lot coverage?
Correct. The site coverage would be the ones that myself, as the engineer and the surveyor, stamped off on. The homeowners are the applicants and filled out any paperwork that went to the cardboard appeals.
Okay, I'm confused that the building coverage will be reduced. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The required is reduced. So this would be an intensification of the, no, it's not. Okay.
It's still well under the...
It's still under the 1173 square feet. Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Capoli? Could you describe for us what pre-existing, non-conforming part of the building and the structures are you enlarging?
Yeah. I don't know if you want to look at it, but I kind of, I explain it. In the front of the, in the front of the house, the, the front wall is actually stayed right the same spot where it is. So what's going to happen is the roof currently goes, if this was the front of the wall, the roof goes this way. So what we're going to do now is, where we're adding on the back of the house, the roofline's going to turn, and the roofs now are going to go this way instead of this way. So bringing that little bit of ridge up in the front, I'm, what do they call that, bulk? I think I'm making the bulk a little bit more over the first-floor wall, like what Rick was saying. That part right there.
And how is that currently a pre-existing, non-conforming structure? That part you're referring to, how is that non-conforming?
Non-conforming is that at this current zoning would require, if this building was built now, it would be 25 feet from the road, whereas the zoning back when this was built, or maybe there wasn't zoning, it was able to be put at 17 feet or 19. It's existing at 17 feet and 19 feet.
Okay. And you're increasing that?
We're not changing that at all. What's changing is the building itself is being dormered up top. So, no, we're not encroaching on the lot lines.
Is that the only extension of a pre-existing, non-conforming part of the structure that you're doing?
Correct, except, well, on the west side, the roof is changing slightly, too, but there's no footprint change. We're not getting any closer into any of the setbacks.
Okay.
So it's only the second side yard setback that's changing?
None of the setbacks are changing.
That's the only non-conformity?
The only non-conformity is that the house is pre-existing, too close to Bayberry Road and too close to this northwest lot line. It should be 20 feet. If it was built today, it would have to be 20 feet from the northwest lot line, 25 from the road. They're not changing those at all. They're just changing, we're dormering the existing structure, basically. So it's not getting any, there's no increase in non-conformity.
The left side of that house, that little bump out, you see, do you have the floor plan? The left side, that's staying the way it is, but the roof is going from this, just a little taller. There's going to raise the pitch up on it another foot. So the, everything is pretty much staying the same on that side.
Okay. Ms. Muller, has that answered your question?
Am I correct, then, that there's no increase in existing non-conformity?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board, any other comments? If there are any town officials here who wish to testify, I would call on you first. Having none, then, is there anyone here who wishes to testify in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to testify in opposition to this petition? Being none, is there anything further you wish to add?
I don't think so.
No, I think we've covered it.
Okay. Anything further from the board?
Nope.
Any final comments? Being none, I am in a motion to close the hearing.
So seconded, but still moved.
So in a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. What is the board's pleasure? Anyone want to make a motion to approve this petition?
I'll make a motion to approve the petition.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Do you want to state the details of it?
Yeah. The details, as are in, yeah. And Mr. Capoli can read those.
On the bottom.
I would move to grant the request of special permit to build in addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the code of Town of Harwich, section 325, and based on the Gale case as set forth in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 6. For the property located at 20 Bayberry Road, the board having found that the project will intensify existing non-conformities, add no new non-conformity, and offer no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, are we going to do the conditions?
No intensification of existing non-conformities. Isn't that what we were told?
Yeah.
That's why I'm puzzled.
It can intensify current non-conformities.
It will intensify existing non-conformities, but add no new non-conformity.
Okay. Now, the question is, is the construction going to be done at a period where it would have any interference with the neighboring houses?
I'm planning on, you know, if this passes, I'm planning on submitting the building permit. And then, once they approve the building permit, I have a contract to wait in the start.
How long do you anticipate the work to take?
He figured two weeks. Two weeks to put the house together, roofing it. So probably about two and a half weeks with everything. And then, then there'd be indoor works, which, you know, obviously, the sheet rock and something like that.
Usually have a standard condition that, depending on the neighborhood, but that no work would be done during the period, usually July through August. End of, is it end of Memorial Day?
It depends on the location.
Yeah, it depends on the location, whether or not that would be interfering with any of your neighbors having trucks and cars parked. But you say it's only a two and a half week?
This is what he's telling me, two and a half weeks that you have to construct the house.
He figured five weeks.
I got stuff indoors to do, too, so, you know, it's...
Okay, all right.
Was there a second on that motion?
Yeah. Second on the motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So is there a time period on when it can work on, or I didn't know where that went?
No, no, we didn't add that to it. The issue, it comes down to, if you're in a neighborhood where the roads are narrower and the houses are close together, when you get into the, you know, June, July, and August, everyone is here, and if you have trucks, you know, interfering with your neighbor's zone, it's not a good idea. So we usually have the condition, say you cannot do any major work during that period of time. Indoor work, yes, but nothing on the outdoor that's going to cause traffic. So...
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chipman, would you like these back?
Sure.
I grew up there twice, but I wasn't willing to risk the suspension on my car by going a third time.
Everybody wanted to hear this.
It's an adventure.
You got to go the other way.
Yeah.
Do I have to stamp anything, Sheila?
Yes, you have your plans?
No.
Okay. Okay.
..................................................................................................................................................................
Muller, case number 2019-10.
Yes. Case number 2019-10, 16 Middleton Drive LLC. Through its agent, Paul Galvin, has applied for a special permit to build a new second-floor addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section 325, table 2, area regulations as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 16 Middleton Drive, MAP 5, parcel P3-1, in the RH1 zoning district.
I have any letters from the...
Yes, there is a letter from the Board of Health, written by Katie Tenoglia, Senior Health Agent. She says she has reviewed the application. It is fully compliant four-bedroom disposal system. Construction permit was approved on April 11th, 2019. The Health Department has no concerns with the proposed plan as shown.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Ann Flanagan. Ann Flanagan?
Mm-hmm. I'm Paul Galvin, the agent. I'm the building contractor.
Okay.
And Ann is the homeowner.
Okay. You understand, as I had mentioned earlier, there are only four members of the board. You need four votes in order to pass your request, four out of five. And you have the option of not proceeding this evening if you wish to come back at a time when we have a full board. So you wish to proceed under those circumstances?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So what we have...
No, that's all right. One sec. Okay, you may proceed.
So what we have is a non-conforming lot to the neighbor, 18.4 feet, and it should be 20. The existing footprint is there. We're keeping the footprint as it is, or putting a second floor on the existing footprint.
Okay. Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
Tell me what the non-conforming part of your house is up against what the zoning bylaw is today.
When the house was constructed many years ago, it was built 18.4, 18.7 on the front side, 17.6 on the front side, and 18.4 on the back side. It was built too close to the neighborhood, the neighbor. That's pretty much it.
And...
So if it was over 2.4 inches, two feet and four inches, it would have been conformant. And we're building this, and it has one first floor.
Yeah.
We're building a second floor.
Right. Are you increasing any of the non-conformities?
No, we're just building on top of them.
Mr. Armstrong?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
Can I say something, just?
Absolutely.
Something came up in the last few weeks, and we realized that the ceilings in the house are a little bit low, and we'd like to increase them by maybe eight or 10 inches each. Would that be a problem with the board?
Well, it's not a problem with us as long as, by doing, well, two things. One, it's not a problem for the board as long as the building inspector doesn't have an issue with it.
Yeah.
And it's not a problem for the board as long as you aren't creating a variant situation by exceeding the height that is allowed or creating something else.
Correct.
I mean, but that's an issue that you could bring up with the building inspector.
It's 32, it's 32 is the town height, I believe.
30.
30. And it's going to be, at the moment, we have 26, I think.
23.6.
23.6. And we might bring it to 25.6.
Get six and a half feet to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
It's not an issue for us. I mean, that's, whatever your plans are with the building inspector.
Okay.
You discuss it with him.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Are there any public officials here tonight who wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this matter? Is there anyone here tonight who wish to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the board have any comments? Well, I, in looking at your plans and listening to your testimony, there certainly doesn't appear to be any substantial detriment to the neighborhood or to your surrounding area. There's no one here tonight who is in opposition to it. And I think, based on that, it certainly appears to be in line with the case law that we're familiar with. But I will, anything further, Ms. Muller?
No.
Anything further, gentlemen?
No.
Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Section.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve this petition?
I move to grant this requested special permit to build in addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section 325, and based upon the Gale case as set forth in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 6. For the property located at 16 Middleton Drive, the board having found that the project will intensify existing non-conformities, add no new non-conformity, and offer no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood.
And a second?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Good luck. Lance? Yeah, would you like plans?
I think some of these plans, back here.
Yeah, sure. Great, thank you.
Can you stand for this?
Thank you.
Final, thank you.
Muller will call the next case, please.
Case 2019-11. Philip J. and Beth A. Dowd, through their agent, Jason Muto, Muto? Muto?
Muto.
Muto of Muto Construction, have applied for a special permit to construct a new dormer addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section 325, table 2, area regulations as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 12 Grove Street, MAP 6B, parcel L52, in the RH2 zoning district. We do have a letter from the Senior Health Agent representing the Board of Health. She has reviewed the application to construct a new dormer addition. The Board of Health imposes the following variance conditions. There shall be no increase of square footage to the dwelling. This system shall be inspected and maintained every three years or earlier if necessary. The plan does not allow for the inclusion of a garbage disposal, and variances shall be recorded with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds and Harwich Town Clerk. The Health Department has no issue with the dormer maximum. However, the dwelling will still be restricted to three bedrooms maximum and must abide by the variance conditions.
Let me just clarify that those were variance conditions from a 2013 septic application.
Not a variance under the zoning rules.
Right, those were Health, Board of Health, but she was reiterating...
We're talking about a special permit.
The conditions from 2013.
Okay.
Okay. Would you identify yourself, sir?
Jason Muto.
Okay. You may proceed.
So Philip Dowd has asked me to construct a dormer for him. The main reason was because currently, their bathroom, the one bathroom in their house, is at the total other end of their house. There are two bedrooms upstairs. They have to come out of their bedroom, go downstairs, through their living room, through their dining room, through their kitchen to get to their bathroom. So they asked me to construct a half-bath for them in the upstairs. There's no increase to the square footage. To a technicality, you do not calculate square footage after the roof slope has reached five feet. So we're proposing where the roof slope intersects the floor, raising that area and dormering it to be consistent with the other dormers that are already existing on the home. So in terms of the non-conformities to the house, when you look at the plot plan, front to back, they have negative five feet of setback.
Yeah.
Side to side, I think they have a total of five feet. So there's really no area of the lot that is conforming.
Okay. Ms. Muller, any discussion?
No, I have no questions. I visited the house today, and no.
And by the way, I was here for the historic meeting last week, where there was only three people, so thank you four for being here.
Mr. Armstrong?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
Okay. I can tell from your presentation and also from the documentation that you aren't encroaching on anything. You're not even extending a pre-existing, non-conforming, except for the dorm, the slight dorm you're putting on. There's no evidence that it would be a substantial detriment in the neighborhood under any way and clearly within the terms of the Gale case. Therefore, what is the pleasure of the board?
You want to close the public hearing?
Yep. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I think this is an appropriate location to add the language in for no major demolition construction or landscaping.
Right, yeah. Well, let's find out. How long, how long is this project gonna take?
I would assume it would take about a month and a half to two months.
Oh, okay.
There, we, we've already made the decision to postpone any construction until the end of September.
Okay, okay. So we would put that condition in.
What are our dates again? I keep forgetting.
Well, it's.
I'll put it on here.
Memorial to Labor Day?
No, it's June thirty to Labor Day.
June thirty.
June thirty through, what, Labor Day?
Yep. Um, let me just write that.
Can you do anything about that house across the street?
I would love to do many things to many houses.
I think a big wind is gonna.
You know, there, I've come across many houses that look like they wouldn't, they wouldn't pass the one-ten wind code by any stretch of the imagination.
Mr. Chairman? I move to grant the requested special permit to build an addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three two five, and based upon the Gale case as set forth in Mass. General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section six, for the property located at twelve Grove Street, the board having found that the project will intensify existing non-conformities, add no new non-conformity, and offer no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, conditioned that no substantial exterior demolition, construction, or new landscape between June thirty and Labor Day two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Sheila.
A second?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sir, would you like the plans back?
You have the plans to stand, Sheila.
The description of what people have to do to go to the bathroom during the night is very moving.
Yeah, you know, when I walked into their house, I felt horrible for them. I was like, whoa. In the bathroom, the one bathroom they had. Keeping with the neighborhood. Yeah, hopefully, put some signs up.
Okay.
Hold on.
Case two thousand nineteen dash twelve, Nikki V. Realty Trust LLC, Paul Botsey, trustee, through its agent attorney, William Kroll, has applied for a special permit or in the alternative of variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-four, paragraph A five, as set forth in MGL, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section ten. The property is located at eighty-two Shore Road, map five, parcel P one dash sixteen, in the RH one zoning district. Again, we have a letter from the Board of Health from Katie Tenoglia, senior health agent, saying she has reviewed this application to demolish and replace this house. She notes that a fully compliant four-bedroom septic system is required, and a disposal system construction permit must be approved prior to any building permit sign-off. That's it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, would you please introduce yourselves for the, for the audience?
Sure, thank you. Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port. Good evening, and I have Chris Childs from Patriot Builders seated with me, and I have Mr. and Mrs. Paul Boats seated to my rear right. The property is located, as per the assessors' map that I submitted, it's located on Shore Road in West Harwich. We have a certified plot plan by Bass River Engineering. It was submitted with the petition. The petitioners are seeking to demolish and replace the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence at eighty-two Shore Road pursuant to those plans. And just to review the plans a little bit, the, you can see with the dotted line, the existing house. That's the footprint of the existing house. The red line is the proposed house. So it's squaring it up on the lot, facing the water more squarely. It's coming, it's, we're stepping it back from Shore Road on the south. Right now, it's non-conforming at twenty-three point six. We're making it conforming at twenty-seven point nine because the setback is twenty-five feet. So we're making it conforming on the north side. The existing house is ten point five, and we're pushing it a little further from the lot line to thirteen point two. You're looking quizzical, Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm, I'm.
With me?
I have it. Keep going.
All right. On the west side, the existing house is twenty-three. We're coming a little closer at twenty point five, but still conforming because it's a twenty-foot setback. Then on the east side, on Shore Road extension side, the existing house, because it was angled, was fifteen point six feet. We're squaring it up, and we would be ten point five feet from the lot line of Shore Road extension, still more than the grandfathered setback of ten feet. And, and where I started on the north side, the, the existing house was only ten point five feet on the north side there, and we're making it thirteen point two. So to square it up, we're coming a little bit closer to Shore, Shore Road extension. The building coverage right now is eighteen point seven percent. It's a thirty percent maximum. We're going to twenty-eight points, twenty-eight percent, which, so we're still below the thirty percent maximum. The site coverage is non-conforming right now at thirty-five point one, thirty-five being the maximum. That will increase somewhat to forty-one point eight. But we did take a substantial chunk of the driveway on the west side out of, out of play because that's not gonna be paved. It will be paved up to the point where it says twenty point five. So we're seeking to intensify the easterly, easterly non-conformity pursuant to the Gale case. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming setback, and we're seeking to intensify that and to intensify somewhat the site coverage from thirty-five point one to forty-one point eight percent in accordance with the findings of the Gale case. A special permit relief can be granted for such. We did submit also the building and elevation plans by Patriot Builders and the denial letter from the building inspector. So our argument tonight is, in accordance with the Gale case, that there would be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic, and the like. We would not be creating a nuisance, and there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if this special permit were granted. Thank you.
Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
No questions. Mr. Capoli?
If they reduced the paved driveway, would they not be able to keep the coverage to where it is now?
Not sure I understand if they reduced it.
Reduced it, yes.
They, they already did.
Uh-huh.
It, it shows that it, it went almost to the northerly boundary, the existing paved drive to be removed. So that's how they're keeping the site coverage to only forty-one point eight percent.
We're actually reducing it by fourteen hundred and ninety-four square feet.
But if they reduced it in half again, how much would that go, bring it down percentage wise? I'm not, I'm not a math guy.
If they expanded the paved driveway portion?
They reduced it further.
Reduced it further. Chris and I talked about that, and he had already reduced it down to what the owners thought was practical. I, I would suggest that it's a case of diminishing returns, that you wouldn't reduce that percentage down that much if you took another ten feet off of that, something like that. It may, you know, maybe it gets it to thirty-nine point eight, but it's still not gonna get down below the thirty-five percent.
Thank you.
You are certainly close on the thirty-five point one.
That's why we have engineers.
Just a little bit less.
We thank our lucky stars for that one, yes.
Okay.
But we've got a seal on there and a signature by Mr. McLennan, who I've known for many years.
I fully understand and certainly respect it. Is there any public officials here tonight that wish to testify? Is there anyone here tonight in favor of this petition, other than the owners? Is there anyone here tonight in opposition to this petition? Is there anything further, Mr. Kroll?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any further comments from the board? Okay. A motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion?
Did we talk about conditions?
I think this would need the condition there. I think this, this would be a good candidate for usual conditions.
Yeah, I believe so.
You could then read right here if you're interested.
You understand the condition we're gonna put on it and said you can't do any work basically in the summer, from the end of June, June, July, and August. You probably don't wanna be doing it because your neighbors would be harassing you anyway.
Exterior work.
No, you don't want that. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Capoli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the special, the requested special permit to build an addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three two five, and based upon the Gale case as set forth in Mass. General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section six, for the property located at eighty-two Shore Road, the board having found that the project will intensify existing non-conformities, add no new non-conformity, and offer no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, condition being that no substantial exterior demolition, construction, or new landscape between June thirty and Labor Day two thousand nineteen.
Is it? Okay, do we have a second or do we have a motion? Do you have a motion? We have a second, I'm sorry.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like the plans? Nice little spot down there. It was, it's a perfect example of how things look so different when you see it in person than when you see it in the drawing. Yes, yes, walked around it.
You went to the house.
Yes, yes, we are encouraged to visit every house individually, not as group, because that would violate the open meeting law, but yes. And, and it's very different to look at things than just see them just on paper.
Those eighty-two Shore Road.
How nice, how nice, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that was the one, that was the one with the crossword book and the jigsaw puzzle in the living room.
That's right.
Right, I looked in the.
Yeah, that's it.
You went in.
This is the one with the conditions, right?
Actually, they have seven action items. I would just say there are seven action items.
Okay.
And you would think that these need to be red.
I would.
You would not.
Visiting.
Okay.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
What, what one would that be?
Yeah. So that's kind of the key, and then the second one is the letter D. Okay.
Ms. Muller?
Okay, case two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, Mark D. Molesky and Karen K. Maynard, trustees of the Molesky and Maynard Living Trust, through their agent attorney, William Kroll, have applied for a special permit and, if needed, a variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling where, because of FEMA regulations, the height will exceed the required limit. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three two five dash five four, paragraph A, number five, as set forth in MGL, chapter forty-eight, paragraph six and ten. The property is located at one nineteen Julian Road, map sixteen, partial W four dash four in the RL zoning unit, district, sorry. We have a letter from Katie Tenoglia, again, the senior health agent. She has reviewed this request for special permit and, if needed, a variance, and enumerates seven conditions that the Board of Health has placed on this. She also says that if the Board of, Board of Appeals does grant the permit and possible variance, three action items must be completed first. This is a matter of record, if you're interested in knowing further. In addition, she has written to the board with a copy to her attorney, Kroll, in her capacity as town planner, saying that it's not often that she writes a letter in support of an application. However, in this case, she has written such a letter, and this has to.
Chairman, may I, may I interject something? I apologize.
Sure.
That letter from the town planner is different from the Board of Health letter.
Yes.
The one you're reading is the Board, is the town planner.
Yes.
I think the town planner's letter might make more sense after my presentation as far as understanding what the point she's making, if you wish.
I actually wasn't going to read it. I was just gonna say that it deals with differing methods, methodologies for determining the building height.
All right.
Am I correct on that point?
Yes.
It will speak for itself when we read it.
Right, okay. I would like it read in to the record at the, after we get to that point. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Any further correspondence other than the?
That's all.
From the planning board, okay? Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port. I have Mark Molesky here on my right and his wife Karen Maynard on my left. They are the owners of the property as trustees of the Molesky and Maynard Living Trust. Also present this evening is Karen Kempton, at the rear of the room. She's the architect, brains behind all the plans that you've reviewed. And we have Ray Chesley, the building commissioner, is here for this petition also.
This is gonna be quite a production, I can anticipate.
So.
Should have some background music.
The theme from Jaws?
That's a good thought, that's a, it's a good thought. I'll try to remember that for the future, Mr. Hilliard. So in any event, I'm not planning to make a big production out of it. I'm trying to keep it simple so that I can understand it. It's a complex petition in some ways, but in other ways, it's your basic demolish and replace. The assessors' map shows you that it's at the very end of Julian Road. It's by itself, it sits out, juts out into the wetland towards the beach. I represented the Moleskies when they bought this property several years ago, and the house was not in the best of shape then. They have certain accommodations that they want to make with the new structure, through the new structure. So as far as the, the, I'm trying to look at this as, from two different angles. One is just demolishing and replacing and a Gale case argument, and the other is because of the proposed planning board bylaw amendment that creates a variance situation. So as far as the, the structure is concerned, they're seeking to demolish and replace the existing structure on the westerly sideline. And I submitted a second plan with some green and red lines, again, so that I could understand it because the, the main plan was very busy. So the one with the green lines on it, the green lines are the lot lines of what they own. Does everybody have that?
Yep.
Okay. And that wasn't real clear from the busier plan. And the reason that I wanted the green line on there is that Jul, that, that's the borderline of the lot and Julian Road. It abuts Julian Road on the east, which is a, a way, town way. So the setback is to be twenty-five feet, not twenty feet, which ties in with the existing dwelling. So the existing dwelling is non-conforming on the easterly side because it's less than twenty-five feet from the lot line of, of Julian Road. On the easterly side, it's thirteen point nine, so it's currently non-conforming on the east, I'm sorry, on the westerly side, it's currently non-conforming also. So both sides of the existing dwelling are Gale case subjects where, where it's a pre-existing non-conformity, and the, on the westerly sideline, the new house would maintain that thirteen point nine distance, so there would be no intensification there. On the easterly side, the, it would come, as far as. On the easterly side, um, the, it would come, as far as the deck is concerned, it would be 11.8, but the house itself would be 24.9. So it's really the deck that, that comes closer, not the, not the main structure. There's also a retaining wall that's shown on the busier plan, and that's for the, um, there is a parking area and there's a drive-under garage situation. So they have to have the retaining wall, which, as you know, is a structure. So we're looking for relief in that regard as well. And that's why I submitted it as part of the special permit decision. And the argument is that since the existing structure is already non-conforming on that side, that the retaining wall would be an intensification of that non-conformity and would not create a new non-conformity because we're already too close on that side within the 25-foot setback. As far as building coverage is concerned and, and the like, the building coverage is 7.4% presently, will increase to 9.2%, but still significantly less than 30%. The site coverage is non-conforming at 31.3%, 30% is the maximum. It would be increased slightly to 33.4%. So if it weren't for the height issue, um, the argument would simply be, as I had in the previous petition, that the new dwelling would not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. It would not cause or create a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like. It would not create a nuisance, and would ask that the board grant a special permit for that relief to demolish and replace. Now, the way I look at this, you can handle it however you see fit, but I, I would think that you'd want to grant it, if you are in favor of affording relief to these owners, that you'd grant a special permit for the demolition and replacement, and then a variance for the height, if you're so inclined. Why a variance? Well, the current bylaw, um, under the current bylaw, height is, the maximum height is determined by looking at the, um, base flood elevation. If you calculate the height according to base flood elevation, we are conforming with the new dwelling under the, um, current bylaw. The twist is that the planning board submitted an article for the annual town meeting and advertised in January or February to have a hearing on that. Once you advertise a planning board-proposed article, if it passes at the annual town meeting in May, then it's retroactive basically to when it was advertised, which files us all up for these folks here, these good folks, because we've been working on this for over a year. They've spent a lot of money, lawyers, architects, builders, Rick Roy Construction, don't, we, we don't give away our services, and they, they have spent a lot of money in planning based upon all of us predating all of this project upon the existing bylaw, which is base flood elevation. The proposed bylaw, if it's passed, and I'm, I'm not even sure the planning board intended this result in this type of situation, but it's reality. If it's passed, it would cause our bylaw to go back to average mean grade. And if you calculate the height from average mean grade, we're going to be 43 feet, which is 3.8 feet above what would be allowed if you go from base flood elevation. So that being said, now I think would be a good time to read the Town Planner's letter because I think it's very cogent and explains it very well, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
It's not often that I write, this is from Charlene Greenhouse, is that how she says her name?
House, Greenhouse.
Town Planner. It's not often that I write a letter in support of an application. However, in this circumstance, I believe it is warranted. I have reviewed the petition for a special permit slash variance regarding 119 Julian Road. It is my understanding that the petitioners, builder, engineer, and lawyer have been working on this matter for approximately one year with the understanding that the calculation of the ridge height of the proposed two-story dwelling would be calculated pursuant to the current height formula set forth in the existing bylaw, i.e. from base flood elevation in a VE zone. As you may be aware, there is a proposed change to said definition by the planning board for the May annual town meeting that would change said calculation from base flood elevation to average existing grade. If the calculation was from base flood elevation, the proposed dwelling would be conforming, but if it is from average existing grade, it would be 3.8 feet above the maximum ridge height. In my opinion, the petitioner and his professionals have proceeded in good faith in accordance with the existing bylaw formula and a variance for the same results from the change in the FEMA regulations and said proposed change to the bylaw town meeting. The proposed two-story replacement structure has to be higher due to FEMA regulations and state codes requiring nine-foot ceilings, two-by-sixes instead of two-by-four construction, et cetera. I am also of the opinion that the unique triangular shape of the lot, topography, it's more, it sits more or less by itself out at the edge of Nantucket Sound, and soil conditions, it is surrounded by low-lying salt marsh and dunes, lends itself to a need for a variance. Consequently, I would support a variance in this case of 3.8 feet from the maximum allowed ridge elevation calculated for average existing grade. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Thank you. Ms. Muller, so she makes our variance argument very well there. And this is a low-lying area, if a variance is granted for the height. If you've been to the site, it's low-lying, it's way out there in front of everybody. It's not blocking anybody's view if you grant a 3.8-foot height variance. If you remember, about nine months or so ago, maybe a year ago, I was here for, for that house on Route 28 in West Harwich, where we needed a similar variance, and it was about three to four feet. And I said, okay, the builder, we were going to gradually grade it up around it. Whenever I drive by that house, I, I just, every time I said, that was a good variance for that board to grant. It really looks good. If you've seen that house, they have renovated it beautifully, and they've sloped the landscaping, and you won't be able to tell. I don't think anyone would be able to, you wouldn't notice any kind of a significant change in the height of this structure if you're in the surrounding area, if, if the board grants the variance. So our legal argument is that there is a unique shape to this lot. It's a triangular lot. It squeezes the house down to where it has to be down at the lowest point. There are unique soil conditions, as the Town Planner pointed out, that it's low-lying salt marsh and dunes in the immediate area. So there's a unique shape, size, topography, soil conditions. And, and the hardship is that if they had to cut 3.8 feet off the top of this house, it would be a pretty ugly house. It would be flat roof. I've talked with Rick Roy about it, who's built many houses, and he said, Bill, this would not be an attractive house with a, with a flat roof. So as was pointed out by the Town Planner and in my petition, the FEMA regulations now require, instead of seven-foot ceilings, seven-foot one, seven-foot two, it's nine-foot ceilings. Instead of two-by-fours, you have to use two-by-sixes. All of that pushes the height up. So our argument is that FEMA has caused the need for the variance with their, their regulations and with the, with the planning board, either intentional or not, saying that we're going back to, once they, assuming this will pass, that this change will pass at town meeting, as they usually do, that it would go back to average mean grade. So we're trying to get out in front of this so that you don't grant this tonight, just a special permit, and then it passes at town meeting, and then later on, the building commissioner or a butter or somebody says, hey, what's up? I thought the article passed the town meeting. How come this is 3.8 feet above what's allowed? So we're trying to be out in front of that and be proactive and get a variance from you tonight so we're not coming back hat in hand three or four months from now saying, we got the structure half up and it's been a complaint or whatever, or a town official is questioning whether we should have a variance or not. So we would ask that you grant the variance for the, for the height of the structure on that basis and grant a special permit to demolish and replace the existing structure. And just as an aside, it's not, they're trying to rebuild basically the same structure. They're not trying to elevate it and make it higher for any reason. It's the FEMA regulations. That's my production, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Muller?
Just for our education, can you explain why FEMA wants higher ceilings? What does that do?
Ms., I'll defer to Ms. Kempton, if she has an answer to that, why the ceilings would be higher?
Do you want me to come up?
Yes, please.
Does this have something to do with wind resistance, or?
Well, I'm not aware of the FEMA's totally regulation about the nine-foot ceiling, but a building code regulation is for a seven-foot-three ceiling. And we have very minimal ceilings on the second floor at eight feet. But as far as FEMA regulations, I'm not necessarily aware of that. But we do need the structural steel in those walls on the first floor because of the location and the hurricane-resistant codes we need to use.
Okay. I visited this property today. Thank you, Mr. Crowell, for, Attorney Crowell, for pointing out the 11.8 feet and where the front door is because I was really confused about that. The current front door goes into a bedroom, am I right?
Sure.
There are sliders, and then there's a door that looks like a regular door.
Yeah.
It was added on later. It's a two-part house.
Okay, fascinating, but my other reaction was it's really a little slice of paradise. And I'm curious to hear what the building commissioner has to say. And Ms. Delaney, did we have anything from a butters?
Not a thing.
Nothing, okay, thank you.
Mr. Crowell, if there were no bylaw being presented to town meeting on the issue of the nine-foot ceilings, I'm sorry, on the issue of, of how one goes about and measures the height, would the FEMA regulation in and of itself put you in this situation?
It's my understanding that if we, if we were measuring from base flood elevation, that we would be conforming.
That's the current statute, current bylaw.
Correct.
But you've, and I understand very well, we go back to the date of the first advertisement.
Right.
And if this, if this bylaw change passes, then under those circumstances, they would not, they wouldn't measure to the current bylaw. They would have to measure to the new bylaw, and they couldn't do that. However, my question is, if none of that happened, would they, and under the FEMA requirement, did they have nine-foot ceilings? Would they still be under, in that same situation?
That's my understanding from.
So without that, they'd have to come before this board and ask for a variance based on the FEMA regulation. Forget what the town did.
That's my understanding from David Clark, the engineer, and from Rick Roy. We've gone over this ad nauseam about how could we make this different and not be here asking for a variance?
So the, the town's change in the town's bylaw, it's sort of a double whammy in a way, but that's really not an argument for a variance, is to say the town has caught us in this first, the first publication of the change, and we got in after that, so therefore we're subject to it.
It's really the FEMA regulation, yes.
It's an issue of, of the government coming in and requiring that you conform to it, which was a similar issue we dealt with not too long ago, with, I believe, this little retaining wall in this wetland area that we were going back and forth over. And we required a variance. And that was a requirement of the waterways or someone that said, you need this. It has, it's useless to the homeowner, what was required to do it. And in order to build this house and get a permit from Mr. Chesley, they had to come before us and get a variance, and we granted it on the fact that they had nothing to do with it. They just, all of a sudden, this pops up, and they're required to do it.
And that was my argument on the West Harwich case, Route 28 case. And if you remember, I said this, that case is crying for a variance. And Mr. Hettestead, of all people, agreed that it was crying for a variance, and.
Again, my concern, and my reason I'm bringing this up, is my concern is that every time the, the, the planning board decides to change a, a bylaw for the, for the good, that, you know, people oftentimes have no clue. They don't know when the first ad's coming out, and so they've already lost the race.
Right.
And I don't want them running to the Board of Appeal looking for a variance for the reasons we want to be grandfathered, because there is no grandfathering under those circumstances, you're subject to it. Certainly sounds like an argument to me that if the government entity comes in and says, you don't have a choice. You shall have a nine-foot ceiling, and you shall use two-by-sixes. That automatically has an impact now. Then we go to measure it, but I think that impact in and of itself is, I don't know, it's pretty serious. And I think that lean, in my opinion, it leans more toward the variance issue, but.
And that's, I did state in Roman numeral two, that, that the increase in height is due to the new FEMA regulations.
Yes, yes.
And that was in the legal ad and so forth.
Is there, are there any other houses in the area being built that would be, that you're aware of, that would be affected by this? Or this is just kind of affecting you and your lot in the manner by which it's?
Other houses have been built behind us, and like even in the marsh, but they're not in our wave zone.
I get it.
And so they could do certain things different than us. And I said, because they're not in our little zone that they are.
Which is important, because I think under the statute, it's got to be something that applies to you, not to the general popul-, I mean, not to the general geographic area, but to your particular lot. Okay.
I'm, you know, after seeing what happened down in Florida, I'm fine.
I.
I'm fine doing up the code and everything.
Yeah, I, this, I don't blame you, okay.
Mr. Armstrong?
Mr. Chairman, I, I share your concern with the FEMA regulations. It seems to me that you still have a height problem based on FEMA, correct? And this is also in the highest zone, flood zone, correct? And it's in the marsh, so, well, I have a picture.
It's in the marsh, but in the marsh.
I mean, it is in the marsh.
Nobody wants to admit living in the marsh.
Right. So, I mean, flooding seems to me to be a, a serious and, and.
It is.
Practical concern. With a hurricane in that area, that would certainly get hit hard. That's why there are FEMA regulations like this.
Right.
I tend to lean with what FEMA said and deny the, the height.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm concerned with the, the measurement of the height. If, if, does, does the garage under that have any bearing at all on that? Okay.
But I did, did I understand that you correctly, that you're, you're inclined to deny the variance? Is that what you just said?
Well, I'm leaning in that direction. If, if the FEMA regulation, if the reason for the variance is FEMA regulation, it seems to me that you should be following FEMA regulation.
Well, the, he is. The variance, the variance is to allow them to conform to the FEMA regulations. And at the, but the variance then becomes, because the town's requirement would put them with the FEMA.
The height requirement.
Outside of that. So they're asking for relief from the town's requirement because they have to conform to FEMA. And my, my issue was that I think it's FEMA that's causing this problem. It's not the town's bylaw.
But we're trying to conform to FEMA. We're not trying to get a variance from what FEMA is requiring, requiring, just the opposite.
FEMA would let us go higher, that's fine. FEMA's saying go as high as, they're not saying go as high as, but go.
not saying go as high as one, but go higher, but the town's saying you have to stop at a certain height.
That's the bylaw, yeah.
But because FEMA's saying you have to make the ceiling heights so much higher, it's, FEMA's requirements are above what the town will allow.
Right, right.
Does, does that make better sense?
Yeah, it does, I mean, it's, certainly it's complex, but...
Yeah.
In the building code, does the building code reference how you measure the height?
Mr. Chesley.
Ray Chesley, Building Commissioner. The building code references a minimum height, there, it really isn't a maximum height on the ceiling, so, it's, it's driven by design, structural design, if, if what I'm hearing is correct, from Karen.
It is a zoning bylaw that gives a maximum height, shall be no higher than in this particular district, so it's a bylaw, it's not the building code, and this, what violates that, then, is the fact that if they conform to FEMA, under these circumstances, they are going above, we believe, they're going above the required height, is that correct, Mr. Chesley?
Uh, yes, that's, that's what it looks like, and...
Yeah, it looks if it's passed.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with the nine-foot height on the, on the FEMA regulation itself, I think that's driven more by design and, and being able to reinforce things, but Karen can correct me on that, so...
That was my understanding from Mr. Clark, the engineer, and Mr. Roy, builder, that they had to be nine-foot ceilings, to comply with FEMA.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to be clear with Mr. Armstrong, that we're...
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Mr. Chesley, is there something else, anything else you can tell us that can think us through this?
Well, it's, it's fairly isolated in, in relation to other houses in the area, and I guess the, the reason I'm having trouble with it is because the law was published, or the, the proposal was published, and now, what do we do with the whole thing? And that's why we're here in front of you, to figure out what to do about that whole thing.
So, the issue becomes one of, is to let them build the house they want in conformance with FEMA, nine-foot ceilings, two-by-sixes, the roof that, that 14.3, whatever the requirement is, and what we're basically using as a basis of that is the requirement to have nine-foot ceilings by FEMA, not under the measurement issue of the town, but if we give relief under the so-called FEMA requirement, they're getting released in the town bylaw.
Uh, yes, yeah, that's...
The proposed bylaw, which is more than likely to pass.
The proposed bylaw, but I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, I was looking at the plan, and Bill's got it there in front of him.
Okay.
If I read the, the, the definition correctly in the, the existing code, the maximum height would be measured from the base flood elevation closest, in the closest AE zone, and it's either 11, I think it's either 11 or 12, Phil, is it 13 there?
Right.
Okay, the closest is 13?
Yes, according to the plan.
Okay, so we add the 30, and we get to the, that's how you get to the 43.
Right.
We're in 28, 10, so we're under the...
Right, okay, okay.
Could I ask?
So, in other words, we would conform if it were not for the new, for the new...
Those were our marching orders when we started this last summer, was that we wanted to conform to the 30-foot height restriction of the VFA.
Correct, right, okay.
Mr. Capoli has a question, Mr. Chesley.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Armstrong.
Oh, thank you. You said it was a design-based, the nine-foot calculations, is there an alternative to the nine-foot, or, or not?
Well, that, yeah, I have to address the designer on that.
But that's, okay.
Again, I haven't heard or don't know about this FEMA regulation for nine-foot ceilings, but as far as structural that's required for a house like this, we do need to have I-beams and steel tubular columns in the walls, so there needs to be structure to allow for that. As far as the building code, the building code is 7'4", I believe, so even at that, we're only 14 inches above what the building code requires, so it's not a large amount. But there is additional steel, the whole back of the house will probably, because of all the glass, will need steel I-beams and tubular steel, which all take up space.
So, in, in, so in other words, just so I'm clear on this, under building code, height requirements for a floor is seven, you said?
Seven-sixths, seven-fourths.
Seven-sixths?
Yes, I think seven.
And, and with the two stories, that, that doesn't make much of a difference, in other words, even if you were to go to that, they wouldn't, you wouldn't save that much height.
It doesn't, right, it doesn't.
Again, the, the engineer and the builder, and, and the builder's traveling, couldn't be present tonight, but repeatedly, they've told me that they had to have nine-foot ceilings to meet FEMA regulations.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Armstrong?
No, thank you.
Mr. Capoli?
Nothing to add, as long as we're couching this in the FEMA argument and not the...
Yeah.
Right, I'm good.
Go ahead.
Ms. Moller? I am a little troubled, because with the understanding that this is a FEMA-created hardship, if you will, I was inclined to grant the variance, but we have nobody here who can seem to speak to that authoritatively, that bothers me. You're, you've got received knowledge from the engineer and the builder. Is it, is FEMA requiring a certain minimum ceiling height, or is it the fact that FEMA is requiring certain structural elements, which in a house of this size would logically lead to that ceiling height, that's...
Either, either way, I think you end up with the same result, nine-foot ceilings. It's not, it's not these two saying, we want higher ceilings.
Right.
It's, they have to be higher.
There, I'm taking the statement made by Ms. Reno, where she says that same results from the change in the FEMA regulations, and said proposed change by the bylaw at the town meeting, so she's making reference to the FEMA regulations as well.
Has to be higher due to FEMA regulations, yeah.
She's equating both of them, which I, and I'm, I'm just the one who's suggesting we look at the FEMA regulation as opposed to a variance every time someone...
Well, I think your point's well taken, Mr. Chairman, that every time the bylaw changes, you don't want everybody running into a variance.
People may be running in here looking for a variance, yeah, okay. Anyone, any other comments from the board at this moment? We'll reserve them. Mr. Chesley, is there anything else you'd like to tell us? Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Would you mind showing up every night?
If you need me, I'll be here.
You're a wonderful resource.
I, I was just talking with Karen about how the height is actually calculated, and I'm reading it a little bit different than the design team is reading it, and the way it's outlined in the existing bylaws, you do this average of the, the first, first calculation is the average of the existing heights out there at the time, but then the last paragraph says that if you're in a VE zone or an AE zone, you use the base flood elevation for the closest AE zone. Now, I, I think they've used the VE zone rather than the AE zone, so I'm finding there's a foot difference, and...
Which end, and how...
So, in other words, I think under their original design, the way I interpret it, that they would not qualify under the original design by one foot.
Okay.
Because I think the, you'd, you'd add 30 feet to the closest AE zone, and it's right between an AE 11 and AE 12, so if it said AE 12, that would get you to 42 feet, but they really need 43 feet, so I don't think either way they qualify.
Okay, okay.
The way I read it.
All right.
But you guys have the...
Well, no, I think what you're saying is that that's why they need a variance.
Yes, that's right, I think they need a variance either way.
Yes.
Unless, unless I haven't got the wrong plan here, but let's see, so here...
It's hard, it's very complicated.
It is.
So, you use the AE, not the VE.
I'm not an engineer, I'm just, you're using 11, so I want to play this as 12.
Right, so 30 and, and 12 is 42, they want 43, so there's a foot, right? Yeah, let me just show you, I'll tell you in a second, just, distinction without a difference, but...
I think you might be right.
Gentlemen, is there something we should know, or can I carry on?
They're doing math.
Yeah, well, just a moment, we just have a minute. I was involved in a case of how to measure the height of a residential facility in a town not too far from here, several years ago, and they couldn't understand the formula. So, what the town said is they had the town manager, I'm sorry, the town building inspector, the town engineer, the head of the Department of Public Works, three of them went out, and they applied their own logic to how this formula should work, and they all came back with three different heights on a building.
I believe it.
They then moved the next year to simplify the way you measure it, because, you know, buildings don't always sit on flat, they can be, the ground can be like this, so you could, they tried to simplify it the next year, and they still couldn't, so this is not an issue that is just, you have to deal with.
Right.
Oh, it's a major issue on how to measure the height of a building. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, may, Mr. Chairman, the, the building commissioner agrees that, that we would need a variance either way to have our 43-foot ridge elevation.
Okay, I think it's a distinction without a difference.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Anything else from the board? Anything else from the petitioner?
Well, I just would remind the board how much effort, time and effort has been put into this, and that we're aware that we need a unanimous vote tonight for a variance, and if we denied the variance, we cannot come back for two years with a substantially similar petition, so we're hoping that the board sees fit to grant the height variance, because that would put a major squash on the whole, literally on the whole project. Thank you.
I would, from my own point of view, I think it's a unique situation, primarily because it's a requirement that we have no control over, it comes out of the sky, whether it's FEMA, whether it's the Department of Public Health, whether it's the Board of Health, which we just had a deal with several weeks ago, where they told us to, they had this, family had to put this retaining wall in the middle of their, their lot, which had, it had no use for them whatsoever, but it required a variance, and I look at it as something that's totally out of your control. My own perspective, I think it meets the criteria for, under the statute, for variance, because it's being required by a government agency, and you have no choice in it, and it came after you purchased your property, that's my opinion. Now, do we have a motion to close this hearing?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Is there a motion?
Could we wait a minute?
Sure.
Because this is, it's going to be twofold, so, am I right? There should be two motions, one to grant a special permit...
And we have to do, why don't we take the special permit first?
Can we take a moment?
Sure, take a moment.
And we know no building, June, July, August. We got that one.
I don't think we need that, yeah.
Uh, no, I don't think so, I mean, one of the issues that we approve, as you've heard, Mr. Crowell, you don't understand, if, if we're going to say you can't build in Ju, in July and August, but is that an issue where you live?
No.
I didn't think so.
Way out there, I don't think so.
But I would think, but we're not planning to anyways.
I bought the house for the summer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, it's a, it's a great site.
Live with it one more year, it's just...
No, it's, I loved it a lot, I mean...
It's dilapidated, but we're...
What's not to love?
Right.
I know.
Put a little tent out there.
I go out there and I go fishing, and the strippers are running clothes.
You know, your, your house will have half the life that most houses have with respect to wear and tear because of sitting in the ocean.
No, we, no.
Me and the builder have talked...
I have a similar situation, and things just...
Just rot.
Yeah, yeah.
Wind blown.
Wind blown, but...
It's life.
I look at it, and about 30...
Salt, salt takes its toll.
30 years, I'll be dead, and I don't worry about it anymore.
No, no, you're right, that's right.
But until then...
I don't know, it could be hard for Ms. Maynard to find somebody else to take that expense with her.
Oh, I think we've got things a little wrong here.
Yeah, yeah.
Is she has stuff of mine?
I think it's yours.
Okay.
Either way, we're done with it, I think.
Yeah, okay.
So, do you go in and out of the house through that regular door, or do you go around to the deck, or what?
No, we use, we go, yeah, we go up, over that, you know, over the patio, there's that, um, bluestone patio, and we go in kind of down by the living room.
Okay.
That's the door we go in and out, most of the time, and then, you know, but in the summer, all the doors are open, people go in and out.
You see the house, right? Yes, obviously.
So, in the wintertime, I literally have to keep that door closed, rain will blow in, everything...
I would think so.
Yeah, rain's in our house.
It doesn't look like was ever the dirtiest door.
You ready, Mr. Capoli?
I'm ready on the first half.
This is on the special permit?
Yes. Will it be two votes, or one?
It'd be two votes.
This is one, the first motion.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the requested special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling according to the plans provided at 119 Julian Road, the board having found that there will be intensifications of existing non-conformities, no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're waiting for the second motion, being written.
He's got the hardest one.
Second motion is on the variance.
What do you plan to say?
Um, we want to...
We should wait until we take a vote.
Yeah, I was like, he's awesome, I don't know.
This is a very simplified version, so I just can't write anything.
Thank you, Shayla.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the requested variance for the height of the new structure at 119 Julian Road, board having found that the lot's soil shape and topography are unique, and the FEMA regulations create a hardship.
Okay, may I just add to that?
Please, I'll, I'll write whatever you say.
Owing, owing to the topography of the land, and especially affecting the land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, that the board finds that a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and that desirable relief has been able to be granted and may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was your second for the first, second for the first as well?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for all your attention and concern and...
Thank you.
Great job by your counsel, by the way, it was a very complex, difficult case for all of us to understand, and did a great job.
Now, it's on your builder and your engineer.
Well, right, you know, getting it together, I think it's one of the first homes really going to be on peers in Howard, probably, except for the new...
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master.
Oh, yeah.
But, but we're going to be, you know, first, see, we're going home.
Have you been to the North Carolina shore?
No, I haven't.
They're all...
Every, everything's on, everything's on Pierce, yeah.
Thank you, Sharon.
It's such a beautiful spot.
Good luck, good luck.
It's the only reason I bought it.
I can understand. There was, there was a heron and an egret when we were down there today, it was just-
In, in the saltwater marsh park?
Yes.
Go there in the, in the winter? You have birds, I've never seen any that winter there, and some spring birds.
Thank you, Mr. Chesley, for coming.
You're welcome.
Your pres-, your presence was very helpful.
Okay, good.
See you next, uh, next month.
Good luck.
I'm very much.
Thank you again.
Could, could you line them all up even with-
Don't quit, don't quit now, attorney. Thank you.
And the carpet cleaner.
Vacuum cleaner's in the second door on the right.
Oh, good job.
That's the first one I have a box.
Bless you. Okay, I have one additional item here, they came from Shorefront Consulting. Um, they occasionally send out these notices of a license application for waterways license. And so they, this is Shorefront Consulting sending the Board of Appeals notice of this application for a waterways license. They have to do a public notice, and they ask that any of the town departments who might have any objection or thoughts, send comments in writing within thirty days of hearing about it. So if anybody would like, I can-
What does this mean for us practically speaking?
What do they want?
They are looking for to construct or maintain an existing post nineteen eighty-four pier dock with piles. And it is, I can't even tell you what the address on this is. But what I was going to suggest, if anybody was interested, a one ninety-two Long Pond Drive. So it's going to be on the pond, to maintain a dock on the pond. So it's already a dock that's in-
Is this under our jurisdiction?
They, they just ask for, send it out to all the boards. Anybody have an opinion, you need to send it to us within thirty days. That's the only reason why I'm bringing it up.
We don't have jurisdiction, it's just, any pond-
No, but if you had an opinion, they would welcome an opinion. So if anybody wants, I can scan and send it to you via email. Just let me know. Okay, and then the minutes from the last meeting, I'll take a, um-
Is there a motion? Motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-seventh, is that the date? March twenty-seventh meeting? Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, motion to adjourn.
Motion, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.